Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Vice President Cobb?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
Director Baumright?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. So item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so move.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item five, the superintendent's report.
Go ahead, Director President.
I'm just gonna acknowledge that our superintendent is having troubles with internet connectivity this evening, so I think Deputy Superintendent Garcia may be able to fill in items 5.1 and 5.2 to some extent.
Yeah, and I think I just saw her connect, so Superintendent, are you there? We'll give you a...
You're muted. You're muted Superintendent.
Okay, I'm here, I think.
You made it.
It's great to have you Superintendent Santorino. Are you ready for superintendent report, or did you need a minute? Would you like to shuffle and go to item six, or would you like to start?
Uh, no, no, let's do it, sorry.
Okay, item 5.1, COVID-19 Response Funding Update.
So is that the superintendent's report?
That, we have Courtney Leach here to provide the update for you.
Alright, alright, I'm here, I'm here. Courtney!
Don't worry Carla, I gotcha.
Alright, thank you.
I gotcha. Um, so hello, uh, thank you Vice President Cobb and members of the board for the opportunity to update you this evening on several funding programs supporting the district's COVID-19 response. Um, like every, let's see, is the slide deck up, Tom? Okay, great. Like, like every member of our community, um, you know? We're ready? Okay, like each member of our community, the school, ooh, can we go back one please? See, back, my...
So this is the first example of what school looked like yesterday. We had phones, we had screenshots, so this is a real life example that we have orchestrated for you to show you what some folks did. And unfortunately, we're not as graceful as some of our classroom teachers, but I know that they, that we will get a little forgiveness. Nope, we're all good team.
Alright. That musical interlude was actually really wonderful. Um, so, hi, I'm Courtney Leach, grants manager for the district. Um, and, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, start, like each member of our community, the school district has had to adapt and change in response to COVID-19 conditions. And, uh, you know, from providing day camps for children of first responders, and distributing the most meals to students of any school district in Washington State this past spring. To launching remote learning this fall, um, we have engaged in a great deal of new and different work. And it's not surprising that this new and different work has come with new and different costs. And we're not done. There remains considerable uncertainty around what our costs will look like this year as we continue to adapt to the advice of our health department. Um, however, in the midst of this uncertainty, we are very thankful that new funding streams have emerged to help address these new costs. There are three significant grant programs currently supporting our efforts I would like to review with you this evening. The first is our Federal Emergency Management, um, our FEMA Public Assistance Program. The second, oh, we can go ahead and stay on that backslide there, Tom. Hold up. But, um, uh, that we have FEMA, we have through the CARES Act two programs, um, which we'll call, um, we'll know as ESER. And, um, the new Pierce County School Assistance Program. Um, I'm going to review each of those funding programs in turn, um, going to include how we intend to use it. And at the end, I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have. But before we dive in, um, I'd like to clarify that how we use these valuable sources of grant funding is decided through a careful review of the restrictions attached to each funding source, and then squaring those against the district's needs and priorities. Quite often, those don't perfectly align, and so accordingly, many of the activities and costs associated with our COVID-19 response will not be supported by these grant programs. And an additional disclaimer, the descriptions that follow will not provide a complete snapshot of all the good work, um, all the hard work that we are doing in response to COVID, um, and/or the cost of those activities. Uh, next slide please, Tom. Let's talk FEMA. So we have just received a, just over $20,000, um, in support from FEMA through the Washington Department of the Military. It is a one-time award, and that $20,000 represents 75% of eligible costs we have for FEMA. Um, because FEMA is a rapid response opportunity, it will only cover those expenses incurred during our very initial response to the COVID pandemic. Those, um, incurred between March 13th in spring and April 6th. Um, FEMA will support those costs, and, um, FEMA does not intend to provide further support to our schools as we adapt, um, throughout the year. And we are however poised, um, if those conditions change, if the rules change, we are poised and ready to reapply for more funding, and we'll be able to do so if that does occur. Next slide please, Tom. Let's talk ESER. So through the CARES Act, ESER is providing the district, or the, the elementary and secondary school emergency response fund is providing the district with up to 8.2 million in funding. Again, this is a one-time award through the Department of Education, it's administered by OSPI, and it reimburses us for costs we incur. And so we incur those costs, and then we apply for reimbursement for those costs that are eligible. Um, the funding period, unlike other programs that we're gonna chat about this evening, um, is from March 13th, that big day in spring, through the end of this school year, through August 31st, 2021. Um, and it's intended to support the school district throughout the school year. The purpose is to address the impact COVID-19 has and continues to have on our schools. And, um, it does provide the district with considerable flexibility. We may use it to support all schools and offset some revenue losses experienced due to the spring closures, specifically due to the inability to sell meals during that period. Um, it does require an equitable share set aside for our private schools that, um, are within district boundaries. And, um, that's using Title I Part A methodology. So funds are directed to, um, where, uh, they're needed most. We are going to use CARES ESER to support, among other things, likely, technology for remote and hybrid learning. It will be leveraged to support, um, our elementary social and emotional learning curriculum that is distributed throughout the district. And, um, for things like nutrition, PPE, mask cleaning, and other operational changes throughout the year. Next slide please, Tom. So thank you Pierce County Council for creating this recent program. Um, it will provide the district with up to $750,000. Again, that is a program where we incur those costs upfront and apply for reimbursement. Um, the funds are being distributed, distributed to all K-12 school providers across Pierce County, both public school districts and private schools. And then the amount of the award is based on student enrollment, up to a maximum of $750,000. Um, and we qualify for that maximum award. Um, the funding, um, period is pretty rapid. It will support costs that we have incurred starting March 1st, um, through December of this year. And its purpose is to support the district's response to COVID-19, um, by reimbursing necessary costs accounted, that were not accounted for in our most recent budget passed, um, by March 27th. And those funds will support digital connectivity for students facilitated by our great partner, the Foundation for Tacoma Students. And it will help offset the costs of our Tacoma online system contract. Next slide please, Tom. So in total, across these three funding programs, you will see that we have, um, roughly nine million in support coming to the district. And of course, um, I understand that that number becomes meaningful only when compared to the cost of our COVID response. I will say that that cost is considerable, and there are still a lot of unknowns. We know the investment required will eclipse the amount provided by these three grant programs. Uh, our technology investment alone is, is looking, um, to be over eight million at this point. Um, we also know that some costs will not be eligible for support through these programs, and we will need to pivot. Um, however, these funding sources are providing a critically important lift for our district. Um, I will say that we also are partnering with Pierce County Department of Emergency Management and other government agencies and community-based organizations to ensure we're sharing knowledge about funding programs available, and, uh, and partnering together on those, um, to ensure that we receive those resources as a community. Um, and we know that it's only by working in the sort of partnership that we can realize the best outcomes for our kids. There you have it. Those are our three big COVID-19 external funding support programs. Um, and I am happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you so much Courtney for your presentation. And Lou was just running through each board member and asking if you have questions. I'm gonna try to rely tonight on the hand raising feature to signal to me that you have questions. But because I didn't give you any warning, I will do it this time to ask if, if there are any questions of members of the board about the presentation. I'll start with Director Baumright.
Um, no, thank you. I appreciate Courtney, I just appreciated the, the clear, the crispness of the explanation. I think it brings a lot of things into focus. Thank you very much. I don't have any questions.
Director Keating, any questions?
About the presentation? Um, not, I don't know that it's necessarily a question, but maybe, well, kind of. It's my understanding that, um, as of, I believe today, that the Senate did, that came to an impasse on any further, um, funding relief. Um, I, I was, I was on a WASD call earlier today, and I thought that that's what I heard. Um, does, do you know anything further about that?
I do not. That's interesting. I look forward to hearing more about that. We're watching the space closely, and it changes, um, hour to hour, day by day, um, and, uh, we'll follow up.
What I was told, uh, what we were told on the WASD call is to not anticipate any additional funding from the feds.
That is a very safe assumption.
Okay. No other questions, thank you.
Director Leon?
Yeah, that was, my question was answered there, yeah, that, uh, can we, can, can we expect any more federal funds? I've heard many, many times that we shouldn't be, uh, expecting it. It may happen, but it sounds like nothing else is recurrent in the funds we're getting. So, uh, it's gonna be, um, you know, important for us to think about how we, uh, potentially have, think about reallocating funds throughout the year from other departments, if that's a possibility, to keep our students and staff safe, so. Not, not a question there, just a comment.
I have two, what I hope are very quick questions. One, related to the equitable share set aside, how does that work? Uh, do we send that, those funds to our private schools in our district proactively, or do they have to come and seek the funds in order to receive them?
Fantastic question. So it is incumbent upon the district to go to each of the eight private schools that are eligible for those funds, and to engage in a consultation process where we identify the, um, their most pressing needs. And then we, um, do purchases or, um, on their behalf. We must maintain fiscal control of those funds. And, um, so our private schools will be hearing from us, um, actually tomorrow about their allocations and next step.
Okay.
We had a little bit of, you know, we had a little bit of slowdown. There was some, um, uh, conversations, um, at a, really, at a national level about how those funds would be distributed to private schools, and we finally arrived on a, on a solution.
Is that the same process that is being done with the county allocation of funds? I, I remember hearing in the press release that those schools are gonna be included and get their share, but is that just a direct payment to them in that context?
That is a direct payment to those schools, and it's using a per pupil allocation rather than a Title I, um, allocation, which, um, favors or, or addresses those, um, areas that are in most financial need.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, this is a great update on, um, these new revenue sources to help address the costs that we've incurred related to COVID. But can you say anything briefly about, um, the impacts we've seen on our planned revenue sources related to COVID? There was one reference in one of these grants to being able to use them to cover costs, cover revenues that we expected to get but didn't get. Do we have a sense yet about what the, uh, impact on our planned revenue has been, or will be?
The, um, yes and no. We have a lot of, of, um, of different information coming in right now regarding, um, you know, revenue losses from things that were canceled in the spring, the inability to, um, rent out our building spaces, the inability to sell meals, those sorts of things. Um, and we also have some shifting changes, um, you know, on transportation funding. So I imagine, um, we're going to have some more clarity, um, in the month ahead. And, um, I imagine we'll be able to, to get a report back to the district, to, to the, um, the board, excuse me, on those impacts.
Thank you, that was really helpful. I don't need any more detail right now, just hearing the buckets, like even thinking through, oh, the, the meals that use, people usually pay for, and the facilities rentals, just knowing like some of those sources, that's really helpful context. I see Director Leon's hand.
Yeah, just, uh, the comment about private schools, are we, um, seeing or expecting, uh, not just a private school loss of students from a public school system, uh, throughout the year? Well, can that happen, and do we lose fundings if, if parents decide to put their private school, or, uh, online school that is not related to Tacoma Public Schools online, or homeschool?
So, um, different funding strings are, um, dependent on different enrollment counts at different times. And so it's a complicated question to try to address. Um, that's also something I think that we could cover in perhaps a Friday report. How, how that could impact the district if that were to occur. It's an excellent question.
It is something that I hear is happening across the country, so it's gonna impact, is there left in our district, and how much funds we have for our staff. Thanks.
If we have less students, we will have less funds. We will have less, uh, students to serve, of course, but yes, the short answer is, is although it's a complicated formula, you are 100% correct, Director Leon, is is we, loss of funds will result in loss of services and opportunities.
And, and I'll just say that, you know, in any, in any year, we also have a slight contingency in place for a potential loss of students. Um, we budget a little less than what our demographer provides for, just as a contingency. Um, but if it exceeds, if our decline happens to exceed that contingency, then that could put some pressure on us financially.
Any further questions or comments? Not? Thank you again Courtney for the presentation. We'll move on to item 5.2, First Day of School Update. We can barely hear you. You're a little quiet. You might wanna see if your volume is all the way up. We can hear you now, I think.
Can't even find my volume, can you hear me?
That's better.
Better? Oh, and it's funny, because my volume's up to the top. Alright, I'll try, try speak. I think I'm just having an aura of electricity coming off of me, and it's just destroying everything I touch, because this is Kathy's computer, so. Um, it's just one of those days, and I know that we have lots of parents that can totally relate, based on their experiences. Um, usually on the first day of school, I report, you know, uh, my colleagues and I, we get out to the schools, we go into classrooms, we talk to teachers, and we talk to principals. And of course, this was, uh, this was a different year. Usually my worst fear on the first day of school is that we have a kindergartner that gets on the wrong bus. And we have a parent running around. So that was the one thing I didn't have to worry about today, was having a kindergartner on the wrong bus yesterday. But let me tell you, that yesterday was the same in so many ways, but, uh, definitely different. Um, I called about 26 principals just to check in and find out how things were going, and to, uh, one, everyone was positive about how their day went. Uh, many of them said it went better than what they had expected. And they also said that they had glitches. There were, you know, there were also glitches that went around with it. But for the most part, they were able to get into, uh, some of the classrooms that the teachers were, you know, were virtually teaching in, and, uh, said they were going well. Um, I also just, uh, randomly asked principals, give me the name of a teacher I can call to kind of, uh, figure out how their day went. And, um, I ended up calling about eight teachers after their day ended, and just said, so, tell me the good, the bad, and the ugly. And again, every one of them was positive about the exchange they'd had with their students. And some of them did acknowledge that they had a couple of glitches, and a couple of things they had to work through. But every teacher that I talked to was excited and delighted to see their students, and talked about how glad their students were to see them. And actually, each teacher was, you know, I didn't even ask the question about attendance, but every teacher said, oh, and I had all 22 of my students there, or I only had one missing, or I had one gone, but he told me he wasn't gonna be there today, so I thought that that was really, really good. Um, a lot of schools paired their first day with a supply give-off, you know, pass out, or had some kind of other thing that they did, and, uh, you know, practiced their, you know, high-fives from a distance. And one of the things that Melissa Thing said, she's the principal, um, over at Larchmont, and she said, oh, one of the things I thought that was really good, because I actually had worries about this, is she said she can tell who is smiling based on the crinkles in their eyes. So everybody's saying, hey, you know, nobody can communicate, because they have a mask on. That's not true. You can watch that face and those eyes, and you can see who's smiling, so I thought that was great. Um, Northeast Tacoma has a new principal, Christiana Devonoudy, and she had a welcome back all-school assembly. And I can't imagine that, it was with everybody. So the entire staff was introduced by video, and after assembly, they broke up into individual class meetings, and, uh, Mrs., uh, Devonoudy went to every class and was able to see them. So, so many more great stories about how our teachers and our principals went out of their way, uh, to connect with their students. But, hey, I'm not saying everything was perfect. We had a lot of students that did not get connected this first day. And, uh, please know that we regret every snafu, and we know that there were several, and, you know, we're working on it. I was talking to somebody this afternoon who, uh, works with students at a, an emergency shelter, and she said they had their computers, they had their connections, but they just didn't have the expertise to figure out how to do it. So I sent somebody over, you know, I have a connection for her so they can make sure they go it. So we know, parents, I know that some of you were frustrated and angry and upset, and I don't blame you, the first day of school is a traditional happy day. And so I apologize for those of you that had a major glitch. One of the major technology glitches in our, uh, remote learning was our Teams platform, which is really what we use, is what we're using, you know, to, uh, to lead our kids in groups. And, uh, we know that there was a glitch in that, and so I asked Ed specifically to come on, just to talk to us a little bit about what happened. So sometimes it helps us if we know, like right now, I wanna know why my computer is still swirling and saying restarting. So if you just, you know, if somebody can fix it for me and tell me what it was, I'll feel better. So Ed, can you talk a little bit about what happened to Teams?
Sure. Oh, good evening, everyone. When we first sent out our announcement, we sent it out early because it looked like a technical issue with the Teams platform. And, like a lot of technical problems when it first starts, we don't really know what the problem is. Uh, what it ended up being is, we've been changing classes, we've been assigning kids, staff, uh, moving staff around. So what had happened is we synced our eSchool Plus system to our Teams platform, and then we made a lot more changes. And so what we needed to do is kick off a manual sync to get all the teachers into the classes they'd been assigned, to get all the kids into the classes. The good news on that front is, at this point, we now have a nightly, um, planned sync, so that we should avoid those issues. Uh, if we get a new kid in the morning that registers for school, uh, unfortunately, they won't instantly appear in Teams, but by the next morning, they should be fine. Uh, same thing with a new staff member. So we're running that sync. It, it takes four or five hours to run because of the number of users we have in the system. Uh, but, again, we should be okay on that front from here on out.
Thanks Ed. And I, I think it does help people to know that, you know, there was a recognized glitch. It's not that I didn't understand what to do, and, uh, that, you know, that we're working on getting it remedied. Hey, and so, yeah, also yesterday was the first day of Tacoma online, and what an undertaking. Uh, building an online system in such a short, short timeline was not easy. Dr. Garcia, I know that Adam Kulis, who's really the principal of Tacoma Online, wrote a note. Can you share just some of the ups and downs?
Thank you, Superintendent. A couple of just things for context wise. We got our first round of priority enrollment established on August 23rd. As of today, this morning, late this evening, I just checked in before the board meeting, we have over 3,900 students that are actively enrolled in Tacoma Online. Perspective wise, five school districts has less students in there. So it is a big operation to be put up in there. And so there were some wins. Secondary students. Remember, our students are connected to their homeschools. And so from a technology infrastructure, there's still scheduling issues. But secondary students got in and started to provide personalized reflections about what do they need in order to be successful in Tacoma Online? I was able to read some of those. Principal Kulas was receiving those. And it really helps us match up with their advisors. Students are still being matched to their advisors. Parent communications that have come to Principal Kulas have been gracious and understanding. Even in these times of frustrations, we want to thank our parents because Adam went out of his way to say, you know, the parents that I'm talking to, they have been extremely gracious and patient with us, even though when we don't have the best answer. He acknowledged our teachers have been phenomenal. Some of our teachers have known about their teaching assignments in their shifts for days. Sometimes 24 hours because of the enrollment fluxes and changes. And our Tacoma teachers have adapted and they've gone in and they've started to build those relationships and tried to motivate and serve the students and families and have been complete professionals. Elementary teachers have been connecting with their families across the district and they are starting already, will begin after the relationship phase, introduction of edgenuity. And they're making those daily connections. Here are some of the things that we know that are still continued challenges. Completing secondary advisory staffing and secondary students working in edgenuity. So as those secondary students continue to look at their schedules, make sure that their schedules are accurate, we have to communicate with their homeschools. There will continue to be adjustments. That happens every year and every school, but it's, it's at a higher volume in one school. There's approximately 800, 900 students new to Tacoma Online at the high school levels. The adjustment of student enrollment. So what happens now that I missed the priority enrollment date? And students have dropped. Students have, families said, oh, I wasn't, I was confused about remote learning or Tacoma Online. What do I do? I don't want that. And so we've allowed those families in these first couple of days, even though we said, once you sign up for Tacoma Online, you need to stay through the trimester or semester. We, we know that there is a window of opportunity where families have to correct that. Maybe they hit the wrong button, they were misunderstood, they changed their mind, they'll do that. So we're balancing those out and then we will start to take students off the waitlist that's still wanted it because there will be some room available. And so we'll start those phone calls and if families still want that spot, they'll have that opportunity to come back into Tacoma Online or in there. We knew that device distribution for the elementary students in Tacoma Online was going to be a challenge for the first couple of weeks. I'll remind everyone is we were planning hybrid learning all the way up to July, July 23rd, which seems like a lifetime ago, but really wasn't that much. And so in that model, we were building out secondary students first. The good news is elementary students under the leadership of Ed and his team will start getting computers. I believe we're scheduling for the 21st. A lot of the families do have computers, but we know that it's still a challenge for some of them that do not have that access. So that distribution is something that we're continuing to prioritize and work on. There were challenges with logins, access, et cetera. Some of those questions Ed has, his team creates great data. Some were software issues, some were hardware issues, some were, I don't even know where to start. Some are, help me turn it on for the first time. And those are all natural. And so there were some of those challenges and we will continue to work through those. There is communications, the website, there were nightly newsletter updates that will continue to be posted. So if you go into Tacoma Online and about and stay connected, those families. The last thing, if you are a Tacoma Online family and you have not heard from the school, there is a good chance that we don't have your accurate information. So there is a plea, if you're not getting communications from the Tacoma Online staff and you're registered, please contact, you can contact the district office or your homeschool and update your eSchool Plus account information. And so we're actively trying to reach out to those families that we haven't heard from to make sure that we have the most accurate updated information. And that's just a friendly reminder to all families, please go sure and make sure your contact information is updated on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. The other thing we know is that, you know, we've talked in the beginning about how we know our, our environment is going to continue to shift. Some of you may have heard or read that, you know, the person who's giving us our guidance about school, Dr. Anthony Chen has also said that he felt like it was safe to start beginnings, bringing students back. The Pierce County Superintendent's got together and we at least tried to come up on some deadlines, deadlines that we're going to count on. But just know we are, we're working through that. We have suggested some tentative dates, but we have not, we're not finished with this conversation. Anything else you want to add, Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, I think that it's safe to say that, you know, we communicated to families that we were not coming back before September 21st. And we would be looking at the numbers. I, I believe we're also in a solid place to let folks know is that would not be the week of the 21st as we start to there. K2 through, K through two families should expect to continue to be in remote learning up until a minimum of September 28th. And so as we look through, we will be spending the next couple of weeks and we're being transparent with you folks at home is you, you need to continue to plan for remote learning at least until September 28th. A lot of folks will say, well, great, what about grades three through five and how long should I plan for there? And it, I think it's safe to say it will not happen at this place because we will bring K2 back first in the guidance. And so we're tentatively targeting and saying, what would it look like to bring students back potentially October 5th? And that is a potential date that we're, we're not saying is going to happen for sure. But as families, you've been asking these questions and we want to make sure that you have the latest information. Secondary students, you'll read the guidance says, we can't bring them back for three weeks later at a minimum. So those families that are in secondary schools, you know that you're going to be in remote learning through the month of September and into a good portion of October at a bare minimum. We're supposed to get more guidance tomorrow and then throughout next week. And I think it's safe to say, we will be giving you another update with some more assertive numbers, dates that we could say to you. Here's what we know now with the caveat that the Dr. Chen's office has been very clear, numbers could change with COVID between now and then. And so the superintendent has been very clear in the past is we want to notify you when we can, but things could change over the next few weeks. And so this is a friendly reminder of kids at home, how long will I be in remote learning? Well, K2. And I, I would say there's going to be small groups of kids, even in the secondary students. Some of our special education students would start to come back on campus during that time, some of our self-contained classrooms. If the numbers hold and we can meet the safety protocols and social distancing protocols.
That's great. And I, I hope you heard all those little caveats along the way because it, it just shows why we can't say definitely this is the next, this is where we'll start back to school hybrid learning is because there's so many factors that are influencing the decision. And yes, you know, we've chosen to really follow the medical, our Pierce County Health Department. And we've stuck with them and we know that they have discussions and we know that King County and Pierce County talk back and forth. So there's so many factors that go into it. So again, one more thing, this is unprecedented. There's not a roadmap written for it. And so that's why it all often seems that we're at crossroads because we are. And so we just ask you to be patient with that. We are excited about having kids, kids in remote learning. We're excited about the potential of learning being coordinated and on a platform. And I'm excited about how much enthusiasm there was out in the field. And also just to see, I can't wait to get into some of those, I hope teachers will invite me into their Teams classroom so we can start to see how that works. Make sure you let your principal know if, just like Dr. Garcia said, if you haven't gotten any information, then something's wrong. You know, get your kindergarten, you can go into your school, I think with an appointment right now, get it, you know, get it figured out. We're here to, 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 to help, not keep you out of the system. We want it to work for you. I think that this is one of those things, you've seen all the cute commercials about let's work together. This is definitely one of those instances where we've got to stay together. I'm committed to a productive learning field school year. Let us know what you need to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and for the update. Members of the board who have questions or comments, please indicate by raising your hands so I can know to call on you. I'll give you a second to put your hands up. Not seeing any.
Lisa, I see, I thought Lisa had one.
Okay.
I also see Director Leon.
Go ahead, Director Leon.
Okay. Yeah. Well, thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate that. I think it's important that the public knows that our administration team and all of us are having these conversations with the health department, the other surrounding districts around science and that, as Superintendent has said, if infection rates were to worsen for some reason, then those theoretical potential dates that Dr. Garcia just gave could change. We're hopeful that, that that won't happen and that things will continue to improve and we'll be able to get some kids in front of teachers part-time and eventually, of course, full-time. But it's going to take really continued vigilance by our community to stay safe. I'm going to mention one, well, not one, but several episodes that I think are something we should consider watching and being more careful about. I've seen pictures and gotten notices from lots of high schools about senior sunrise day. And I saw pictures of large groups of 30 to 50 kids right next to each other, most of them not wearing masks. So there are things like this that really should not continue. I know there are important traditions that we wish we still could have. But it's important not to continue to get together in these large groups or we're not going to be able to get you in front of your teachers very soon. Thank you.
Director Keating?
Yeah, um, thank you. I had two questions. And as one of the parents of Tacoma Online students, I'm aware of some of the glitches. And so I was curious because I, I know in regards, I saw a lot of parents that were confused or frustrated around one of the assignments in terms of creating a digital poster, which I think is a really cool assignment to engage students and get them going and help staff get to know the student. But I, I noticed there were a lot of families that were having a hard time figuring out how to work sway, how to get pictures up on to their digital program or digital poster. And so I'm curious about how families can figure, how, how can they get that support? Where do they go to be able to, you know, ask that question? Like, I don't even know how to use this. What do I do? And how do I help my, you know, whether it's my sixth grader or, you know, my ninth grader, like what do I do? So I was curious, that's one of my questions.
I know you can go, I mean, first thing is go to, you know, get a message into Adam Kulis because we know we're going to need to provide more professional development for parents and we're going to have to have a schedule. And as most people know, and a lot of people told me that, you know, teachers, some of the teachers just learned how to do a sway and how to do a flip bid. I know the words, but I don't have a clue what they are actually. So we've got a lot of learning to do and we want to set up some PD that's especially for parents so they can go and get help and get some assistance with that. So we'll be working on that.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question, which wasn't mentioned, I was wondering about, I've heard some confusion around day camps. And I've heard some families have called them educational camps. And so could you provide some clarification on the day camps that are currently in our, some of our schools?
You're muted. Dr. Garcia?
I was waiting for that invitation. Thank you, Director Keating. I figured if I moved my lips, folks would say, so I, yes. So just a little clarity around day camps. Day camps are, are run and hosted and facilitated by our community partners. They do use our space, but they use our space because they have an agreement to use our space in there. We do not run the day camps. We do not provide the educational programming. And, and it's difficult sometimes to know the distinction because we do have a great reputation in Tacoma Partnering. And what does a partnership mean? Our teaching staff and why they're not educational programs is obviously facilitating the remote learning phase. And so they, these are truly camps where the community partners are providing activities, enrichment, supports, supervision for families. They are accessible to Tacoma Public Schools families. They are also accessible to other residents inside Tacoma. And so they are not Tacoma Public School programs per se in there. So we aren't able to provide staff for them because our staff is supporting what's happening inside the learning spaces. It is also important for folks to know is as our kids come onto campus, those camps will be moved to other locations inside the community. And so they are not a fixed placement, if you will, as well there. So they are just a community effort, not just, they are a marvelous community effort to provide supervision and support to those families that need it while students are attending their remote learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments, Director Bondry? I, I don't see your hand, but I couldn't see Director Keating's hand either. So I just want to check.
Yeah, my hand's up.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess my question is one that we've been hearing a lot over the past few months about the paraprofessionals. And, you know, what is, how are they getting back in, in touch with their, their students, the one-on-ones? Or the ones that were assigned to major classrooms where, where they were not assigned to a specific child? You know, so can you just for the, just clear up or just share a little bit about where we are with the first week of school and kids hooking up with their, their para or how that's playing out?
So I'll attempt, Lisa's also on the line, so she can, she on the call, so she, I mean, on our end of the meeting. But, you know, it's a, it's a painstaking process and it means that we have to work on it individually. We can't do any bulk or group decisions. And so it, it does take time. It doesn't mean that we're writing a new IEP for every student. That's not true. It's just that we have teams that are looking at current IEPs and figuring out, so what kind of support does that, what kind of support does that student need? And there have been paras who've had their, you know, their hours increased because the student that they're supporting needs additional time. So it's, you know, I know that the Student Services Team is working non-stop to get that back. And I know that HR is totally looking at, you know, this is one of those things where it's a little more personalized. Because if you've had Carla Santorno as your, you know, your one-on-one para, then we want you to have her, her hours extended so that, because the child already knows her and is going to work with her. So we're really, we're continuing to work on that. I know that, you know, you know, that some folks haven't been contacted and they haven't been touched, they haven't had that touch yet. But we are working on it. And so, I don't know, Lisa, did I forget anything?
No, I think the thing that I would seek to emphasize is a word that you used, which is team. An IEP cannot be amended in isolation or unilaterally. It is an absolute team effort consisting of the, the case manager, of course, the parent who knows the child best. And, and so that takes time. Our certificated staff first day and our entire staff first day was just this week on Wednesday. So time is, is what is needed in order to do this thoroughly, accurately, and with the team approach. But as we've committed to all along, they will be reviewed, they are being reviewed. And each student who has a one-on-one para designated in their IEP will receive those services. It's critical, it's paramount, it's important, and we value. It's critical, it's paramount, it's important, and we value that.
And it's the law, so we're following.
That's right.
Thank, thank you, ladies. I appreciate that. Um, so a second question, well, did, Josh, did you want to add something? You're, you're muted.
There's an, thank you so much. There's an important note there that is as important as, as the classroom teacher is, is the one that's designing the instructional program for our students. And as Dr. Nolan mentioned, is our classroom teachers have just come back and they haven't had an opportunity to do that work. And so they are a part of that team and they are the ones that are designing the instruction for those students. And so it's critical that they have a chance to do that and formulate that. And so that is why it is an individual plan for every student. So I just want to make sure that our classroom teachers have a little space to breathe as they get into this new world and they're thinking about this. And now even as the science is saying, it's possible that you come back, that's another shift, right? It seems like we never get a chance to even go there. So our classroom teachers need a chance to work with their case managers and their individual families. And they haven't been afforded to that.
Thanks, actually, thanks. That actually really clarifies it and makes it, we understand the extra steps that, that everybody is going through. And thank you for, for sharing that. I think the other thing I wanted to mention and just acknowledge, and maybe you can talk a little bit about it, Deputy Sir Garcia, about the whole nutrition and delivering of meals. Because I know everyone first, you know, we sent out a, a message about the meals being delivered, two of them on one day and then three on the next day. And then, then the feds came down with changing the law and allowing us to actually serve any child that needed a meal versus what we were told originally, which was just the kids who had, who qualified for the free and reduced lunch. And we had to document and make sure it was being handed to that child. And so we went from one day telling everybody, you know, here's the new meal delivery plan to all of a sudden, oh, just kidding, now we're delivering them every day. And I know it, I just, you know, I want you to be able to explain that to the public so it doesn't sound like, you know, Tacoma, Tacoma Public Schools just doesn't know what it's doing. It's more about, we, we were actually planning ahead for, for the, for the one scenario. And then literally the day after we announced it, the feds made the change. But I don't know if you want to expound upon that and talk a little bit about what actually is reality today for nutrition.
I think you've done an amazing, amazing job capturing it. And the good news is yesterday we served nine thousand meals. And so our families, day one, and it can, great shout out to Paul Harris, Chris Williams, Rosamadina, the whole Nutrition Services staff, the frontline folks, they rolled up their sleeves. And you, you, you talked about those complexities, Dr. Bondright, and they pivoted and they rolled up. And right now they're getting ready to pivot again, right? And so that's the one thing that we all have to remember is our staffs are working extremely hard during this time and guidance changes. We are in a worldwide health pandemic. This is not like any other year. And so we will continue to try to process those and be adaptive. And while I have the moment, I would just like to say that under the main page, there are resources for families. It's under the Families tab. It's called the Family Support Center. And there are webinars, YouTube channels, videos on how to use some of this technology. And we will continue to update them as Superintendent Santorno says. The best thing I would say would to a family is, is it, we all know what it means to be frustrated. Sometimes we're frustrated. Please reach out to us. Let's try to help you, you as an individual, because not all of your challenges are the same. And we'll meet your needs and do our best to do those. So I hope I answered meals. The reality is nine thousand meals and kids are getting food.
Thank you. And I guess just as another aside, we've all experienced today, you know, as of this morning, you know, we were thinking remote learning, you know, on until, you know, we had no idea. Maybe the end of December, maybe February, and then boom, we're here tonight that it's, there is a potential of coming back, you know, even within a month for the, some of these kids. And so that's how quickly things change. And just wanted to thank you all because I know it's, it's, it's actually exhausting to set a whole plan in play and then be told, no, just kidding, now we're doing this. So thank you for that. I'm, I think I'm done.
I appreciate all those questions and the presentation. One thing that I'm wondering if you can say just a bit about in response to some questions that I've seen come through an email, just about how we've provided training to our staff to engage remotely. Can you say just a bit about what kinds of training opportunities have been available to staff to get geared up for Tacoma, engaging in Tacoma Online and engaging in the remote learning platforms?
I don't know what all the training has been. I know that it, it has been, I know that it was right up to the last minute. And I know that they've been working on, you know, having the platform work and also teaching teachers how to teach their students how to do it. I know that principals talked about, especially at the secondary level, you know, really talking about protocols and adequate etiquette and all of those things with, with our students. But all the topics have been, and the bottom line, I think if you ask pretty much any teacher unless they were an expert before and said, hey, are you ready and are you finished and you've got everything you need? They're, they're, they're not there yet because they haven't had a lot of time to practice. But I know that they, so I don't know the specific topics, Director Cobb, except for I know that they were looked at the mechanics. I don't know, Joshua, you may know more about mechanics.
I think just for a little more context, I've heard some really positive feedback from some teachers I've spoken to about what's been provided, especially from the teaching and learning team. So I was just curious, like, I don't know if that falls under the bucket of training or just resources and support. Generally, I've heard really good feedback from.
If you know, I've not, I had a chance to go and, and look at the digital campus, it's another thing on the website. And, and, you know, if you're a family member who is sitting there, no, there's not an expectation that you do all this, right? But if you're a staff member and there's not, you have not had a chance to go through all this. But the Teaching and Learning Department under Marie Verhar has done a phenomenal job of providing resources. Because the resources need to be diverse and varied from different levels. Tacoma Online teachers, some of our, I, my heart goes out to them. Some of them were called and said, hey, you know, there's not enough students at this school, meaning your homeschool, we're going to try to keep you with your homeschool kids, but we're going to need you on that. They're going to continue to get support and training. But everything from technical, technical trainings to equity trainings that our staff has participated in, to looking at data the first couple of days, what kind of data do we have? They went through data protocols to setting up teams, to providing support. And if staff are struggling with technology supports too, they can reach out to the help desk. We have data, they're tracking that, what are those trends? And they're looking at those datas too. So those would be some of the high-level pieces, but we'd also be able to get you a report of specific ones if you'd like.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, moving on. Thank you for the report. Item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board. Just all note for the public again, you all who have been with us in these virtual meetings know that we've changed a bit of our protocol to respond to moving to this virtual setting. And I just want you to know that we'll continue to evolve our protocols as we continue to manage through the reopening and the moving back to a more in-person context. We've heard some feedback from folks who are wanting to have more of an opportunity to comment live. So just know that the board is considering various options and we hear you about wanting that opportunity. But we'll brief you on the current protocol now. So note, alternate protocol, school board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board during a virtual meeting held under the proclamation by the governor, amending proclamation twenty dash five, twenty twenty-eight, Open Public Meetings Act and Public Records Act, please follow these steps. One, prepare a written statement that will be attached to the board agenda and meeting minutes. Two, because this will be a public document, it is recommended that you prepare the statement in a separate document using an application such as Microsoft Word. At the top of the document, please identify yourself and the subject matter for your statement. Please do not include your phone number, address, or email address unless you want that personal identifying information included in the public record. Three, submit your written statement via email to the school board secretary twenty-four hours prior to the start of the meeting. Statements submitted after the deadline will not be considered at this session. Four, statement should be emailed to T. Jones four@tacomaktwelve.wa.us. Five, typically the board allows up to three minutes for your verbal comments. A three-minute verbal statement converts to approximately three hundred to five hundred words or up to two pages of space. Please limit your written statement to these guidelines. Six, during the meeting, the superintendent will read into the record your name and the subject matter of your statement. The superintendent will not read your statement aloud during the meeting. However, your statement will be linked to the agenda so that members of the public will be able to read your statement. Seven, the statement will also be linked to the meeting minutes for future reference. And eight, members of the board will also review your written statement. The superintendent or her designee will follow up with you if action is needed. And just to reassure the public, we do read these comments. We get them in advance of the meeting. So your public input is, or your input, you are the public, your input is very much appreciated and we take it into consideration as we move through our business. Superintendent, will you read the names and subjects of the people who submitted comments?
I will. The first, the first comment submitted was from Drew Anderson regarding SROs in Tacoma Public Schools. Second, Lori Tucci from the Tacoma Federation of Paraprofessionals regarding equitable support for our special education students. And I wanted to note for the record that there was a redaction in that letter made to ensure compliance with FERPA, which requires that we do not disclose confidential student information. Kristy Gledhill regarding terminating Tacoma Public Schools SRO contract. Melissa Roach regarding one-on-one para, just want to help my student. Sarah, I think it's Sarah now, now, I'm not, I apologize for the pronunciation, regarding Tacoma Public Schools neglects most marginalized students. Next, Tacoma Special Needs PTA regarding significant concerns heading into the 2021 school year. And William Gevers regarding the Southern Poverty Law Center. Those are the public statement, public comments submitted.
Thank you, Superintendent Santorno. And before we go too deep into our meeting agenda, some of you might note that there's a different email address given to introduce or to send comments to. So I just want to note that we have a new member of our school board leadership team, I'll say. So we want to welcome Tracy to the team. Tracy will be helping to support receipt, receipt of all these comments and just managing the board's works. We want to welcome Tracy. We want to welcome back our student board member Jasmine, who was not with us for the summer, but we're really excited to have her with us again. We should have probably acknowledged them at the start of the meeting, but before we go on, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge them and welcome them back to the team and to the team formally. So moving on to item seven, essential matters of seven point one, approval of the amended July twenty-third, twenty-twenty school board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt?
I still move.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item seven point two, approval of the August twentieth school board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt?
I motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All of us in favor of adopting item seven point two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is adopted. Item seven point three, election of officers pursuant to policy twelve ten.
The district's general counsel recommends the board call for nominations for a chair and president to serve during the ensuing year. After a roll call vote and assumption of office by the new chair and president, if the vice president role is vacated, then general counsel recommends that the board call for nominations for a vice chair and vice president to serve during the ensuing year and conduct an election via roll call vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item seven point three?
Motion to adopt.
I motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Second.
Just note, just for additional context, as of August thirty-first, first, former director Heinz vacated his seat as a member of the board. So this triggers a need to elect new officers. We typically reorganize or elect new officers in December, but this triggers a need to do this sooner. So I will call for any nominations for a new president or chair of the board. Any nominations?
I would like to nominate Director Cobb as president for the school board.
And I'd like to second that.
Thank you. I appreciate your nomination as the second. And general counsel, do we need to take a roll call vote for this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, given it's been a motion and it's been seconded, I will call for the roll call vote.
Roll call vote starting with Vice President Cobb.
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Bondright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
The motion passes four to zero. Congratulations, President Cobb.
Thank you. Well, now that the vice president seat has been vacated, following the guidance and the policy, I will call for nominations for a vice president. Now, I'd like to take this step to nominate Director Bondright for vice president.
I second.
It's moved and seconded. And is there any comments from members of the board? I should have called for comment before. Hearing none, can we call for a roll call vote?
Yes, President Cobb.
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Bondright?
Aye.
And Director Keating?
Aye.
Congratulations. We have a four-zero vote to Vice President Bondright. And so the board will now reorganize and we have President Cobb and Vice President Bondright presiding.
Chief Counsel, should they move on the dais?
Yeah, yes. Definitely. And we need new name tags as well. So I'm sure Tracy will be working on that.
Thank you for that clarity, Chief Counsel.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item seven point four, approval of synchronous contract for switches and switch components using funding year twenty twenty E-rate, ESG one twelve consortium.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the chief information officer recommends the board of directors authorize the superintendent to negotiate and award the contact for switches and switch components from July first, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, funding source technology level, levy, excuse me.
Is there a motion?
I still move.
So a second?
I second. I second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any questions from members of the board or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting item seven point four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item seven point five, first reading of policy thirty-two twenty-four and section three hundred opioid-related overdose reversal.
Thank you. Before I read the agenda item, I just wanted to share a couple of details that might aid you in your discussion tonight. This policy addresses the public health crisis around opioid, opioid overdose. And the district will seek out at least one set of opioid, opioid, I have to practice that word, opioid reversal medications, which is also called Narcan for each high school. We have received donated Narcan from Adapt Pharma and our local Tacoma Pierce County Fire Department, which will allow for two doses in each high school as well as ten backup doses that will be housed at the district. Narcan cabinets have been installed in each high school and training individuals in the high school has already been provided by Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. So I'll read the agenda item and then open it up for questions. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors review policy, proposed policy number thirty-four twenty-four and section three thousand opioid-related overdose reversal and provide feedback before a second meeting, reading.
Thank you. There are questions or comments from members of the board?
Have a question. Oh, sorry.
Director Leon?
This is only at high schools or middle schools also?
Just high schools.
Okay. As we know, the opioid epidemic does cross over sometimes into younger age kids. I think, I wonder if these are donated samples, if it wouldn't cost us more to have them at our middle schools. I'd urge consideration of that in addition to high school. I think it's wonderful we have it at the high schools. And, but this is a medication that's not harmful, you know, to take, even if you misdos it. So this is something we give all patients that opiates at home to have just in case also. So.
Okay. That's a really good point. The, the RCW cites high school only, but that doesn't mean we can't do more.
I see that Director Bondright's hand, but before going to her question, I just want to second Director Leon's question. That is exactly the one I was going to raise, just wondering your opinion here. That is exactly the one I was going to raise, just when you're up the decision here related to just high school. So I second his recommendation to consider adding them at the middle school. Director Bondright?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to agree with Dr. Leon a hundred percent of that, but I also am wondering, when you say high schools, I want to make it make clear that we're not just talking about the comprehensive high schools. So sometimes we we are and I want to, the intention, I believe, was all the high schools, correct?
Correct.
And I would, I would say we should have them at the all the secondary schools for sure and even at the elementaries if we can, we can get the donations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
I think Lisa Keating has one. Director Keating.
I don't know why I can't see Director Keating's hand. Okay, Director Keating.
I'll just raise it in the screen, it's fine. So when I was reading the resolution, I think that we're talking about, I was curious about which, it talked about that there would be trained staff and I was curious outside of a nurse, who would, who qualified to be trained and how to, and just curious about who else in a building besides a nurse, because I know that we don't have nurses all the time in buildings when we're in buildings. So I was just curious about that.
Could be the office coordinator, could be the principal counselor. In fact, in most, in most buildings, there's more than just one. So, you know, some buildings don't have a full-time nurse and so want to have somebody on staff at all times that can administer it. And then as you read closely of the, some of the materials that are presented there, they're supposed to call 911 even though they administer, they can administer it themselves. So a first responder will be on site within hopefully minutes, even if it's just a nose spray. It's just a little, you know, nose spray that's really easy to administer.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
Thank you. I just want to just take the opportunity because we're starting a new school year. Those that are watching at home, there is still an opportunity to provide feedback around policies. This is the first reading. So as this, our typical first reading, we present information, we gather feedback, we go through a process at home, or at home, we go through a process inside the district of making sure their staff have an opportunity to provide feedback to policies. But if you do have feedback that you'd like, consider the staff to make recommendations or consider those, you can email Ms. Jones that feedback as well. And then based on the board's comments, the feedback that we get, we would then bring you back a second revised version, if appropriate, for your considered for actual adoption. So that's the process that we're taking for those that are new or watching for the first time.
Any further comments from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
So item 7.6, approval of addendum number one for BTU Direct LLC DBA BTU Mechanical to provide kitchen equipment, refrigeration repair, maintenance and inspection services.
Just wanted to give some historical knowledge on BTU Mechanical. They are a small, local business that's been a great partner for the district. They're responsible for the, obviously, the maintenance and inspection and repair of our kitchen equipment. They, we have a great maintenance staff, but this is a skill set that we typically would outsource. They've been on a contract over the last five years and there hasn't been any increase in the contract price, which has been tremendous for the district. That generally reflects a 7% increase, which we find more than fair for a small, local business that's done exceptional work for the district. With that said, let me open this mic up. The chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors approve the addendum to BTU Mechanical in the amount of $331,700 excluding sales tax.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 7.6?
Motion to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about the item? I don't trust a hand, so I'm hearing none, but if you're hearing none, all those in favor of adopting item 7.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item is adopted. Before moving on to item eight, announcement of future board meetings, it's not included on this agenda, but I do want to take a moment to pause and ask if there are any comments from members of the board. In our non-emergency context, we typically have an opportunity for board comments or committee reports. So I just want to take a second to check in with you all to see if there are any comments that folks want to offer before we get closer to adjourning tonight. I'll start with Director Keating.
I hope you saw that raise hand. I just wanted first to acknowledge, I wanted to thank both you and Director Bondright for taking on these roles because that just the time commitment, it's, I see it as an additional role that it, on top of what we already have to do as individual board members. So I just want to thank you both for stepping into that and taking on that additional work. So thank you. And then just for the good of the order, I found, I was told today that the Tacoma Special Needs PTA received a grant from the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation and this recently was announced, but they, I think it was $15,000 that they received. And so they're to support any Tacoma Public School student who's on a 504 or an IEP plan through the Special Needs PTA, their Bridge, Bridge the Gap Program. So they're in the process, you can go to their website. It is www.tsp, oh, t s n p t a dot org and there's an application. And so it's just a, they're, what I understand is they're looking to help families get like fidgets, fidget devices, like yoga ball, chairs, and some other things to help support their students. So it's a really generous grant from the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation and will have a really great impact. So I just wanted to share that information because it's, it's cheerful and exciting. So other than that, that's all I have to share.
Thank you. Director Bondright and Director Leon, either of you?
No.
Okay, well then I, I'll offer just a quick comment. I attended my first meeting of the Foundation for Tacoma Students Board yesterday and I'm excited to engage with that group. I just wanted to tee up that they'll be working on their legislative agenda over the course of the next couple of months. So as we work on ours, I just will try to do a good job of liaising between our two organizations to make sure that when it comes to the highest priority needs of our community that we have a common voice in communicating and educating members of the legislature about our needs. And then I also just want to lift up an email communication from Director Keating to all of us related to the WASDA positions and just ask that we all take some time to give her feedback on our priorities for WASDA so that she goes into that conversation or that engagement fully informed by, with our input. So I just want to lift that up and remind us all to take a look. Director Keating, please remind us again, but I just read the email earlier, so it was up top of mind for me, but thank you for your willingness to step in and take on that role on our behalf. So item eight, announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, September 16, 2020, we'll meet at 6:00 PM for a study session and then Thursday, September 24, 2020, at 6:00 PM, we will meet for our next regular business meeting. And unless there are any additional comments, we, oh, I'm going to pause and loop back and ask Jasmine, I don't know, Director Bondright, what you were going to say.
Maybe I misheard, but I think you said September 16th. Yeah, you meant the 17th. I just wanted to.
Sorry, thank you. But before that, I didn't give Jasmine a chance to check in with us. So I want to take a moment to ask if there's any report or update from our student board member.
I mean, nothing much. I had my, my first day of school Wednesday. It went pretty well. I think all of my classes have had like complete attendance. Everyone showed up, which was nice. Yeah, but other than that, I don't really have anything to add.
Well, Jasmine, just know that we really enjoy, not enjoy, we appreciate and know that we benefit from you being here and being a part of these conversations. So please as the weeks go on and you have thoughts that you're like, the board members should hear this, take little notes on the side and carry them back to us because we really, you're not just here to say that we have a student on the board. You're here because we want to hear from you. So thank you for being here and making the time tonight. I see Carla's hand waving and I see Ms. True Blood's hand, so I'll go to Carla and then to Renee. We can't hear you, Carla, you're muted.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to also bring it up to our public. We know that Federal Way School District and Sumner have had real difficulties. I know Sumner's been asking for donations of, I think, I think food and water. And so that we, you know, we'll, we'll look and see if we can organize something so people can donate, but we have a couple of districts that are in, that on top of all of this remote learning and stuff have had been impacted by fire, by fires, so.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to remind the public tomorrow is our deadline for applications to fill the vacant board seat. So we're looking forward to continuing that process. And then I also just wanted to note that even though we are continuing to operate under the governor's proclamation regarding open public meetings, we are expiring today the emergency operation resolution for the district. So the upcoming board meetings that the public will see will be returning to our regular format in terms of agenda items, even though we're still in emergency operations in terms of our county and our state, we believe that we're trying to go to business as usual as much as possible here at the district. So we'll see, we'll see a return to that agenda on the 24th.
Thank you for those updates. And just one last thought before we fully adjourn, we spend a lot of time in thinking about, in our conversation about the school reopening, talking about the systems and the platforms and devices and connectivity, but I think our staff, teachers, and are really concerned with just how students are feeling in these first few weeks in particular. And I know that they're paying keen attention to checking in with students just as whole people. So parents and family members out there too, we know that this is top priority for you too. So as we talk about how we partner together, please let us know how we can partner in supporting you and keeping your kids strong and healthy and always, not just physically, but mentally too, and keeping tabs on their feelings of well-being. So just know that we want to partner with you in that regard too, as we work through all these technological challenges too. So with that, we, unless there are any additional comments, we are adjourned.